This conference will now be recorded. Very good. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight for the August 20th of 2020 Muscatine City Council Meeting. Cindy, will you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Hopkins?
Present.
Councilmember Freilich?
Present.
Councilmember Gordon?
Present.
Councilmember Brockert?
Present.
Councilmember Gendrich?
Present.
Councilmember Malcolm?
His audio is not working.
And Councilmember Brackett?
Present.
Kevin, present, zero absent, your honor.
Thank you, Cindy. We are going to work through the agenda tonight together. We are going to skip the Pledge of Allegiance until we're back together again. That moves us to the Communications piece. Is there anybody here tonight who would like to talk to council about something that's not on tonight's agenda? If so, go ahead and speak or type in the chat box and I'll call on you and I'll give you just a minute. I don't see anyone typing. I can't hear anyone. If I have missed someone, please, I don't let us know as we move about through the evening and we'll make sure that you have an opportunity to speak. We're going to move on to number five and I will go through the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless council members so request, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Do I have a motion tonight to approve the consent agenda which includes items 6A, items 8A through H, items 12A and B, and tonight's bill is totaling $1,644,201.62?
So moved, your honor.
Second?
Second, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilman Brackett with a second by Councilwoman Gordon. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. We're going to move right on down to 11A. We have presented for city councils consideration tonight a resolution to adopt the updated Muscatine County Multi-Jurisdiction Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. Cities are required to adopt the plan in order to be eligible for future FEMA funding according to the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000. Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Second?
Second, Freilich.
We have a motion by Councilman Brackett with a second by Councilman Freilich. Is there any discussion? I would like to say a big thank you to Bi-State Regional Commission who helped us work through the Hazard Mitigation Plan. It is something that needs to be done every five years and we have a new emergency manager, Brian Wright. Well, he's been on over a little over a year, but he hasn't had not done this before and we were very fortunate. We had help from Bi-State Regional Commission. Brian did a ton of work. Big thanks, Brian, for helping out and to all of our staff as well for all the work that they did getting this passed. As I, as I shared here, the, it is required if we're going to get any future FEMA funding that each county and all of the cities within the county adopt the Hazard Mitigation Plan. So we're showing that we do have a plan on how we deal with disasters. So big thanks to everybody involved and all the help that, that we were given. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Councilwoman Brockert, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gordon?
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm?
Aye.
Councilman Freilich?
Aye.
Councilman Gendrich?
Aye.
Councilman Hopkins?
Aye.
And Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
Thank you. The resolution is adopted with all ayes. We're on 11B and we have presented for city councils consideration a resolution setting a public hearing for September 3rd of 2020 for the vacation of four areas of ride of way located in an area bound by Oak Street, Mad Creek, Third Street, and Second Street. Upon vacation, HNI is requesting that the property then be deeded to HNI as the adjoining land owner. Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted? So moved, Gordon. We have a motion by Councilwoman Gordon. Councilman Gendrich, would you agree to second?
Yes, I will.
You were second in line there. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilwoman Brockert, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gordon?
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm?
Aye.
Councilman Freilich?
Aye.
Councilman Gendrich?
Aye.
Councilman Hopkins?
Aye.
And Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted with all ayes. We're moving down to 11C. We have presented for city councils consideration a request to enter into a contract with Bolton and Mink to assess, to assist with construction services for the Park Avenue Reconstruction and 4-3 Lane Conversion Project. The city received four proposals and have selected Bolton and Mink with a negotiated amount of an hourly rate. The total amount for this project will not exceed $171,916. The contract is for the entire duration of the construction project. Do I have a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Hopkins.
Do I have a second?
Second, your honor.
We have a motion by Councilman Hopkins with a second by Councilman Brackett. Is there any discussion?
Your honor, I have a question.
All in favor say aye?
Your honor?
Go ahead, please.
Um, when is the work supposed to start with this project?
This is Brian Stein, Public Works Director.
Brian, are you on the call?
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so there, there is a potential, so there, it's a DOT funded project. So there is a start date and a what's called a late start date. The contractor at this point is, could start pretty much anytime in the next 30 days or they could wait until next April. Our understanding right now is they want to get started sooner rather than later. So we don't have an exact start time yet. We're going to have another meeting with them next week and once we have that start date, we will get that to Kevin and we'll let everybody know when it's going to be. I would expect them to start end of this, end of this month, probably.
Okay, what's the projected timeline for, from completion, from a beginning to completion, Brian?
It is, it's a number, it's a number of working days. I apologize, I don't have that top of my head right now, but I can get that to you tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you.
Not longer than, it shouldn't take longer than a few months total, but they will be shut down over the winter time. So I'll get you that, I'll get that information tomorrow, though.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Brian. Is there anyone else? Hearing nothing. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Request is approved with all ayes. We're on 11D now. We have presented for city councils consideration a request to approve a professional services agreement with Strand and Associates for an hourly contract amount. This total project will not exceed $197,000 for the final design of the, of the DURF project, which is dual-use redundant forced main. Due to a failure of the forced main two years ago, the city is under a DNR deadline to design and construct a redundant sewage forced main by 2026. This negotiated design fee is within the amount budgeted. Do I have a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Brockert with a second by Councilman Brackett. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The request is approved with all ayes. We are on 11E. Presented for city councils consideration is a request to approve the issuance of a purchase order in the amount of $55,058.50 to Muscatine Bridge Company for the removal of the existing Dick Drake Way Railroad crossing and replacement with concrete. As part of the ride of way agreement with MPW and GPC, the city of Muscatine was required to provide maintenance at this crossing. As MPW and GPC no longer need the railroad crossing, it can now be removed rather than be replaced. There's $198,100 that was previously allocated from the road use tax budget funds for repair to this crossing. Do I have a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Second, your honor.
Do I have a second? We have a motion by Councilman Brackett with a second by Councilman Malcolm. Is there any discussion?
Yes, your honor.
Please go ahead, Dennis, or Councilman Freilich.
I was down there today and I want to know which crossing we're talking about. There's three or four of them down there. Is this on the east side of Stewart Road or is it the one on the west side by Union Tank? Am I missing something?
This is Brian Stein, Public Works Director. Yes, this, this is the farthest east crossing, so it'd be Stewart Road. It's, it's the one that goes into MPW's power generating plant. It's, I think it was primarily used to take coal and to, and to help build the plant, but that's, that's the crossing we're talking about.
Okay, so it's the one that's east of Stewart Road?
Correct.
Okay. How about, is, I didn't even notice. Are there railroad crossing signs and stuff there, Brian?
Yes, there are.
Okay, whose responsibility are those?
Railroad? Yes.
Okay. So are those all going to be removed at the same time then?
They will, they will come down once the crossing is, is removed, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anything else? Hearing none. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Is there any opposed? The request is approved with all ayes. We're on down to 11F now. We have presented for city councils consideration a request to approve change order 11 for Second and Mulberry Roundabout Project. Due to unforeseen conflicts, extra work had to be done to lower an electrical vault in Mulberry Avenue at alley number two. This is a change order that is for MPW infrastructure and will be reimbursed by Muscatine Power and Water. The amount is $6,044. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
Second, your honor.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Gordon with a second by Councilman Brackett. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The resolution is adopted, or I'm sorry, the request is approved with all ayes. And we are on 11G. We have presented for city councils consideration a request to approve a grant award from the Department of Homeland Security in the amount of $260,909.09 to assist with the purchase of SEBA self-contained breathing apparatus packs and face shields. The 10% local match will be funded from the city's general fund, $26,090.01. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
So moved, Hopkins.
I didn't hear the other person. Who was that?
I think Duane and I both chimed in, so I can second.
Who's aye? John? Is that you?
Yeah, it's John.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Hopkins with a second by Councilman Gendrich. Is there any discussion? I would like to chime in. Great job, Jerry and Gary Rontimer. I, I know the last couple times we, we weren't able to get into this and we really needed it this time. So great job, great job getting that through. Is there anything else? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Is there any opposed? The request is approved with all ayes. And we are on 11H. Presented for city councils consideration is a request to approve a declaration of the fire department's 1978 Chevy C65 Tender as surplus property. This vehicle is beyond its useful life for the department, is no longer needed. Do I have a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Gordon and the second by Councilman Brackett. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The request is approved with all ayes. And we are on 11I. We have presented for city councils consideration a request to approve an agreement between the city of Muscatine and the Loiza Regional Solid Waste Agency for Residential Household Hazardous Waste Services. This is a three-year extension to the current agreement currently in place. Do I have a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Hopkins.
Second.
Do I have a second? We have a motion by Councilman Hopkins with a second by Councilman Brackett. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The request is approved with all ayes. And we are on 11J. We have presented for city councils consideration a request to approve entering into an agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation to receive joint participation funds for the Transit Department in the amount of $423,143. Do I have a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, your honor, Freilich.
Do I have a second?
Second, Brockert.
We have a motion by Councilman Freilich with a second by Councilwoman Brockert. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The request is approved with all ayes. We're on 11K. We have a request to approve the contract with Dude Solutions for Smart Gov Software. Presented for city councils consideration is this request to approve the contract for the Community Development Department. Utilizing this software would consolidate several software systems currently used into one platform that is a user-friendly public portal for property owners, contractors, and landlords. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Second?
Second, Gordon.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman, Councilman Brackett with a second by Councilwoman Gordon. Is there any discussion?
I, I would just say that I think this is a, a good move. I realize the expense is not a, a good timing necessarily, but given all the things that this combines together and the advantages that it'll provide that department, I think is, is an excellent decision.
I agree. I, I think that's, we need that. I, the thing that it pointed out to me, though, I, I know that there was language in the, a join, the attached letter that a lot of the funds can come from staff salaries that are budgeted for that people aren't in that position. And I counted three, so I was just a little concerned that we have, we will have three unfilled slots in that department. Or are they in the process of getting filled?
This is Jody.
Yeah, go ahead, Jody.
Okay, this is Jody Royal Goodwin, Community Development Director, and they're currently vacant and we will fill them, but we wa, we will use the cost savings to offset that as we have now, as well as we're kind of waiting to see what comes out of where we actually land with the pandemic expensive, um, impact on the general funds.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Is, is there any opposed? The request is approved with all ayes. The last main thing on our agenda is a presentation on plans for how we're going to resume having city council meetings be back in council chambers. Cindy, did you find out who's going to be leading that discussion?
No, I would assume Kevin is.
Kevin, our?
Hi, this is Kevin Jensen, the Communications Manager for the city of Muscatine. Yes, we did a, an experiment earlier this evening in city council chambers where we ran a go-to-meeting meeting as, and to find out if the council members could hear the people who were tuning in, in the chambers and if those who tuned in can hear the council members. Everything worked well, except that we're still figuring out how to have the people who are logging in through go-to meeting hear what's going on inside the council chambers. We have a plan of action and feel very confident that we'll have everything ready to go for the first meeting in September.
Kevin, how are we going to be safe?
Right now, we have, the council chairs are distributed at least six feet apart. They're, if you remember, they are basically in a slightly V or U shaped originally. We have now added two more tables that will be facing the main dais so that the mayor and three council members will be in their, in the regular dais and then four council members will be at the tables, but we have measured and will measure again and to make sure that adequate safe distance is preserved.
So we won't have any, the plan is to not have like any people from the public be in the meeting or like observers, so staff won't be in there either. It'll be just the seven council, the city administrator, and Cindy, and me? Is that the plan?
That is the current plan, but I will let our new city administrator determine exactly what she might want when she comes, starts her first day on Monday. If, and I'm sure she'll be in consultation with you and the rest of the council as to whether you want observers, we can put them in the balcony area and mark off areas, so they can have also distancing up, up there, or exactly what you would like. People do still have the opportunity to watch on YouTube and Channel 9 also.
Yeah, the county is still doing it that way, I believe, where they don't have the public in the meeting yet, but they're, they are now meeting in chambers.
Right, and so is the school board, so.
Right. I'm, I'm excited about us getting to be able to be back together. These meetings are awkward this way. I think they'll still continue to be awkward until we have everybody all back together, public and staff and, and the elected officials, but in the meantime, every little step we can make towards that, as long as we can maintain safely, is a good thing, I think. Thank you, Kevin, for working on this and, and everybody who helped you try to come up with the plan. Is there any other discussion or questions?
Your honor?
Yes.
This is Councilman Malcolm. If I remember correctly, two weeks ago, Councilman Brackett requested that one or two of us have a visual walkthrough on behalf of all of us and, and make their recommendation to us what they saw and if they were comfortable with this.
I, I was part of the test this afternoon.
Okay.
No, I was, I, I can, I can speak to that. So I, Greg and Kevin got ahold of me and invited me to come into council chambers during the test, so I was part of that test this afternoon. They definitely have some things that they need to work out, but they've got, I feel, a good path towards making it, it work. I, I expect that we'll probably still have some technical difficulties even after the fact, because the way that it is being configured, the, the biggest concern I have once they work out the snags we ran into today is just that those of us in chambers may need to be quick covering our ears if there's any feedback because of the, the volume level that, that occurs through that. And, and that, just, you know, some adjustments may fix that, but the biggest issue that we were having today was sorting out, getting the sound from chamber into the go-to-meeting. We could hear, you know, Cindy was on there and, uh, I think Mike Hartman was on there as well. There's, anyway, we, and we, we had, we could hear them just fine. We could hear everything they said when they had their mics turned on, but they could not hear us at all through the go-to-meeting. So, you know, as Kevin mentioned, that would make it so people watching on YouTube or watching on TV would still be able to hear everything, but we would run into, as soon as somebody starts turning their TV or YouTube on, on one side and then connecting to go-to-meeting on the other, we're going to end up with a round robin of, of noise that would quickly drown us out. So we, you know, because, and, and we ran into that today because there was a couple of times where we had a device in the room that was also connected to go-to-meeting and the second that there was even the slightest sound, it was just, it was the typical, you know, screech feedback and, and in the echo format and it was painful. But, you know, that, that, that was the test that we needed to do. I think once that part's worked out, we'll be fine. And if it functions and, you know, and I, I volunteered to come and help retest it, uh, once they think they've got the kinks worked out. And at that point in time, if everything works fine, I would be okay with it that way for a meeting or two to see how it goes and make sure that we don't have any issues. But as I said at the last meeting, you know, I want to make sure that we are not shutting out the public in any way or preventing the public from being able to speak to council in a way that we can, that we can communicate properly, because as I've always said, transparency is critical in this and we need to make sure that the public has access to their elected officials.
So, so Kelsey, let me ask you a technical question that you might need to think about or be able to answer. Is it possible that all of us would be in the meeting and all of us still log in to a go-to-meeting set while we're sitting there, but in our case, we mute ourselves where people can talk and we can hear them if they ask questions or they call in, but we can see whatever in front of us, but we ourselves be muted in, in, in chambers?
Yeah, the right way to do that would be for us to actually disconnect our audio. So, and that's something I could show, you know, Kevin or I could show everyone how to do. It's, it's pretty simple. You basically, it was, you would do it the, exactly what was happening to you at the very beginning of the meeting where it was, your audio was completely disconnected because we'll have the audio for the meeting come through the sound system in council chambers.
Yes.
But, well, you know, to be able to have, you know, so that we can see the chat box, you know, for the go-to-meeting and that we can see what the public is seeing through the go-to-meeting, yeah, that would, it would be totally feasible to do that. And you just go into the go-to-meeting settings and click on the big red button that says turn off computer audio and that, that'll do exactly what you're talking about.
Is there any other questions or comments?
Mayor, I'd like to comment quickly. I've been down to City Hall a couple times in the past week or so and although I wasn't part of the test today, uh, you know, it, City Hall Chambers is set up very well for the social distancing and I think staff's put a lot of thought into how that can get organized and I'm anxious to get back into the face-to-face session as well. So I think City Hall Chambers looks good and, uh, hopefully everything will work out well.
Yeah, I would, I would say that the distancing options, I think, are relatively adequate. You know, it'll give us at least six feet apart the way that it's configured. You know, it'll give us at least six feet apart, the way that it's configured. I think that if there's anybody that has concerns that that's still too close, I think that it'd be, you know, wouldn't be too difficult to accommodate a little bit more distance.
Which I think, I think.
Certain me.
Okay. I think we have to be concerned too with entering and exiting and making sure that we're keeping, because we're inside. You know, it's much more critical when you're inside than when you're outside. So we've got to be doing our due diligence of talking before and after not getting closer than that six feet, because we all have loved ones at home to protect. And while it's good for us to get back together, we, I'm not interested in taking any kind of a risk. So I want to make sure that we, that we do do this the right way and everybody's careful and cautious and following all the safety recommendations, and certainly we should be a model.
Yeah, well, and one thing I would suggest after some recent, you know, places that I've been to would be, you know, we need to be wearing our mask until we're in our seat. You know, we need to wear the mask when we enter the building, we need to wear the mask while we're walking around. And, and once we get to our seat, then we can remove our mask. You know, that, that is the practice that I'm seeing with a lot of businesses that have allowed people to come back to work, is that you wear your mask until you're seated. And in this case, it's particularly important because we are not going to have a physical barrier between us. We just are going to have an air gap of six feet roughly. So it is, you know, it is important that we're not wandering around without our masks on and that when we're entering and exiting the area that we do that, so.
And that's following the protocol for the building as well, which is that masks are worn inside the building.
Yeah.
So, so Kelsey, do you know if we have any Muscatine City Council masks with the city flag on them yet? I just thought I'd ask.
I haven't seen any yet, but I'd wear one.
You know what, there are so many people that have stepped up and been extremely helpful to help people seek your masks. I bet there are people that would sew them for us if we asked them. We got new rotary ones.
I just got some, I got some sent to me from an organization that I'm involved with here recently as well, and it was nice to get some extras.
Anyone else? Well, again, thank you to all the staff and you, Kelsey, for working on putting this together so that we can be back together again and still fulfill our duties. But as Kelsey mentioned, transparency with the public is always our ultimate goal. And so we can't at all sacrifice transparency and communication with the, with the citizens just to take the awkwardness out. So hopefully, we'll be able to accomplish both. Hearing nothing else, and I haven't seen anybody type in the chat that they had anything they wanted to talk to council about. So we're going to continue with closing out the meeting. Let's see, Councilwoman Brockard, do you have anything you'd like to talk about tonight?
Yes, I do, your honor. I would like to extend my condolences to the family of Jerry Page. He was a longtime airport advisory commission member and chair. And from reading his obituary, that man probably knew more about aviation than the whole rest of Muscatine put together. It was something that he loved, obviously. And I'd like to thank Greg Jenkins for his eight and a half months of service. And I realize that we aren't always the easiest group of folks to get along with, so thank you Greg. Congratulations on your retirement. And then I did a kind of a drive-through through some of the neighborhoods in Fourth Ward the day of the Durex show. And I want to say I'm very proud of the folks in the Fourth Ward for working together to clean up after the storm. They were helping neighbors and it was just, it warmed your heart to see everyone working together. And I'm very proud to be able to represent them.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gordon, do you have anything tonight?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Brodessen. Just again, mirroring what Councilwoman Brockard said, Brackett said is, "Thank you Greg Jenkins for stepping up and accepting the role of our interim city administrator for the last eight months. You really helped us, especially me during the small business loan program. Me and Jody, we worked very closely together. Appreciate everything you've done and have a great time learning how to fish." Because it sounds like you do need some help.
Thank you. Councilman Malcolm, do you have anything?
Nothing, your honor, so for good retirement to Greg. Make sure you take the city flag I gave you with you wherever you travel on your retirement. Enjoy life.
Councilman Freilich.
Yes, your honor, thank you. I'd also like to thank Greg for his service, but I'd also like to welcome Carol Webb aboard. And hopefully, we'll all do our parts and do a good job for the city. And we appreciate her accepting the position and coming here, and nice to have met her again.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Hopkins.
Yes, I too would like to acknowledge Greg Jenkins and all the hard work that he's done. I think he did an outstanding job. Good luck on your retirement, and you're welcome in my boat anytime.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Gendrich.
Yes, your honor, I'd like to take a couple of minutes to recognize a traditional and a really well-respected event that was carried out in Muscatine last weekend, the Watermelon Stampede. And, you know, that event is directed by Dale Wagner, and he just does an absolutely fantastic job with that event. You know, Friday evening, our community and those who want to participate attend two-year-old, eight-year-old competition at the track. Saturday morning, that is for eight years, eight years to 88 years old, however old, you can muster enough strength to get up and down the street. And the race is really well put together, very well directed, and an outstanding traditional event for the city of Muscatine. So my hat's off to, as all of ours should be, in appreciation to Dale Wagner and the Watermelon Stampede. I want to thank Greg Jenkins as well for all his help for me and for the council. And a welcome to Carol Webb and her husband and her daughter. Hopefully, they have a terrific experience here in Muscatine, and that's it.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Brackett.
All right, well, I won't belabor the thanks to Greg a whole lot, because everybody else has already touched on that. But, and I've spoken to him personally as well, so, but yes, thank you very much Greg for stepping up in our time of need and dealing with all of us sometimes difficult people, and I'll just refer to myself on that. I don't know about everyone else, so. But I, you know, I also wanted to talk a little bit about, you know, the storm that we had recently. And I, you know, I know a lot of, there were quite a few people here in town that had damage to their homes, their, you know, and their other structures. A lot of trees were lost. It, you know, but I went, I went up to Cedar Rapids after, after the storm. That's where, you know, it's where I was born. And for those of you that aren't aware of that, I've got a lot of family up there. And Cedar Rapids, it's really unbelievable the damage that has occurred there. The pictures, the videos that we're seeing on, you know, social media and the news do not even portray the level of destruction that has occurred up there. So, you know, if there's people here in town that need, that need help yet from the storm, you know, please reach out. I'd be happy to try and point you in the right direction or, you know, make sure that you get what you need. But if you're fortunate enough to have not suffered issues from that storm and you've got the means to do so, please look for ways to help out around, you know, around the state, but definitely in Cedar Rapids, where they really seem to have been hit the worst. If you can find something that you can help with on that, so thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for doing that, Councilman. I know our Muscatine Salvation Army's been up there every day as well, and a lot of folks have been going up there. Rob Zan's been going up there, even our state auditor, and doing a lot of work to help them. As all the neighbors, like Councilwoman Brockard is talking about, they all come together. And I read something recently about, someone was talking about how we can have our differences and we can believe different things and have different opinions. But Muscatine and Iowa as a whole, when things go south, we, and something bad happens, we put all that aside and help one another. And that's really what makes you have to be from Muscatine and from Iowa, because we do do that. And I think that is just amazing how people do exactly what Councilwoman Brockard was talking about. Get out and help your neighbors, that's what we do, and that makes us really proud. Thank you. Greg, did you have any final words you'd like to say?
Is he muted? Did he already take off? I'm out. I'm unmuted now. Okay.
And again, thanks, thanks for letting me talk to you for these 30 seconds. No, wait a second, I'm going to start over. I want to thank the council for this opportunity I've had as interim city administrator. This has been a fascinating part of my life, and I would never have anticipated anything like this happen. And bumpy as it may have been at times, it has been a great ride, and I appreciate this opportunity. I also want to thank the staff and the department heads, the managers, and the rest of the team, who has been my pleasure to get to know and see how hard they were, their hard work and dedication make things work in Muscatine. I have enjoyed the work, have been fascinated by the sheer magnitude of the work being done. I've been impressed by the can-do attitude and their commitment to do the right thing, even when no one is watching. The department heads and staff have made this happen this year for me. They've gone out of their way to be helpful to me, and I'm truly grateful. Now Carol Webb, I believe, is an excellent choice to be the new city administrator. She's going to do a great job, and the city will be better for having her onboard. I also think she will do a great job turning this committed group of elected officials and city staff into the high-performing team all of you want to be part of, the city needs and deserves. And again, thank you again for this amazing opportunity, and if I can ever be of assistance, just please free to give me a shout. Thanks again.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Greg. I would just like to jump on, well, before I do, Cindy, did you have anything?
Yeah, I just want to thank Greg too. I've had to work with him every day, and he's had to put up with us. And I think we had a pretty good thing in our department. And going to miss working for him, but looking forward to working for Carol as well. So welcome Carol, and looking forward to working with her.
Thank you. And I would just like to echo what everyone else has been saying. Thank you so much Greg for stepping up, your very first day of retirement from the, from the chamber to helping us out immediately when we needed the help and being there to help us fill in that interim until we got somebody onboarded and, and really, really appreciate it. We also want to welcome with open arms Carol Ward, who has moved her whole family here on our behalf. And we're so pleased that she did. We have nothing but high hopes for, for her time here in Muscatine. And we're really looking forward to seeing all that she can do. By the same token, I would like to thank Rule and Rule, who last night gave a very lovely welcome party and an opportunity for people in the community to come and meet Carol. Tried to keep it small because of the pandemic we're in, but it was really nice of them to do that, and we thank them certainly. I would also like to thank Councilman Brackett, who filled in as mayor pro tem for me the last meeting that we had, the first one in August. I appreciate you stepping in in that way. And finally, I'd like to thank Muscatine Power and Water. On Monday, we had a dedication ceremony for the new water tower. We had, there was a contest. I want to thank the, the authority that helped put that together. You know, certainly want to thank the Iowa Department of Natural Resources, certainly the artist Laura Palmer, but, but really the way that the economic authority was able to come up with this contest and all the people in Muscatine who called to vote in and went online and voted in so that we could win and get our water tower refurbished, beautified, all at no cost to any of the customers here in Muscatine. And as everyone knows, Muscatine Power and Water is a city-owned utility. And so when they save money, we save money, so, and we have, it was needed. I mean, we were going to have to do this, and so it was able to be done at no cost to the customers. And it's beautiful, and we thank them and everybody for all their hard work. I know that the Power and Water staff worked really hard, putting all of these pieces together, and big thanks to them. And like I said, thanks to all of the people who not only voted so that we could win, but then when I went out in February and looked at some of the preview of what the tower was going to look like, so many people had weighed in on how they wanted things to look. So it made it be a very big job for them, what they were going to have to do. So thank you to them for looking out for our community. I don't see anyone else trying to chime in, and I think we've made it around the room for everyone. We will have a new city administrator when we meet once again and be back in chambers perhaps. So that is the plan. Hearing nothing else tonight, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move, your honor.
We are adjourned. Stay safe, Muscatine. Good night.
Good night.